Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We are the Oatana School Board. This is Monday. It's March 29th at 5:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Eric, our attendance?
All seven board members and the student rep are present.
Fantastic. Let's all rise and join in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up tonight would be to simply approve the agenda as presented. We'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Both motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor with an "aye"?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Elstad for our mission moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to introduce to you our student who is our mission moment and certainly captures all four of our commitment areas. And as I read a little bit more about Fardosa Farah to you, you're going to learn a little bit more about how she fits into those areas. But first and foremost, it's my honor to present to you Fardosa, who won a scholarship with the United States Senate. In fact, she just recently completed the part of the United States Senate Youth Program. And she got to spend some time, I believe, with Senator Amy Klobuchar and Senator Tina Smith. And she was also, she also received a $10,000 college scholarship as a result of it. Fardosa is one of our scholar students at our high school. She's a current junior at the high school and serves as our junior class representative. She's an executive board member of the Central Asian English Project that helps tutor over 100 girls in Kyrgyzstan and provide free English lessons and resources. Fardosa also is the chapter president of the Minnesota Youth Against Sexual Violence Group. There's a team of passionate fellow students across the state to raise awareness about sexual violence and provide resources to sexual assault survivors. And also works on those initiatives to help better Minnesota for survivors by personally starting local programs like the Oatana Youth Against Sexual Violence Group. She also co-funded, or cofounded, excuse me, a nonprofit organization called FL Tutoring Services, which provides low-income students and underrepresented students across Minnesota with free virtual tutoring. And in her spare time, she's a scholar-student at Oatana High School. I'm so pleased, members of the board, to introduce you tonight to Fardosa, who truly represents the four areas: 21st century learning. So she's always looking forward as to how do I provide online tutoring for students and to help students not only here, but globally as well. Safe and caring community with her work with the Sexual Violence Group and promoting sort of awareness around that. But certainly, we fall into high-quality teaching and learning because at some point in our life, we're going to learn a lot from Fardosa. We're already learning a lot from her. But certainly, when it comes to equity and the voice that Fardosa provides for racial and cultural equity in our community and advocacy for her own race and ethnicity, but certainly that of others as well. So it's really my pleasure tonight and honor to have you here as our March Mission Moment, Fardosa. Congratulations. And I told her, I know board members may have comments or questions, so feel free to ask. She's here to take those on tonight.
I bet there are. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, sleep? Congratulations. Awesome. You give me hope for the future. So thank you so much.
Could you tell me more about your tutoring program? The one that sounds like it's overseas.
Oh, yeah. So the Central Asian English Project is an international group of students. We basically provide free English tutoring to mostly low-income girls because in Kyrgyzstan, it's harder to get an education with a girl. So I have 20 students that I personally teach. So we have classes on Wednesdays and Saturdays in the morning for an hour. And I'm also on the executive floor, so I help with scheduling classes with other students as well.
Fabulous, because I know for girls to get an education over there, it's really tough.
And will you talk just a little bit about the opportunity that you're pursuing with the Senate?
Yeah. So the United States Senate Youth Program, there are about 104 delegates. We had Washington Week last week. We got to speak with a lot of senators. We had Joe Biden come in, President Biden, and that was really cool. There are a lot of long-term opportunities that I got from that. We had a military mentor who's a veteran and is currently working Capitol Hill. And he gave me some internship opportunities and things like that. So that's really where a lot of my long-term stuff came from. But it's also really cool networking with the delegates because they're all crazy impressive.
I'm sure. I just have a quick question. So do you, like, where do you see yourself, like, 10 years from now? Do you have any idea where you'd like to be? Or what is your... You're so driven. There's got to be lots of ideas.
I have, I'm not exactly set on one path, but I kind of want to be a doctor. But at the same time, I do want to work with national non-government, I mean, global non-governmental organizations too. Because I really like working with nonprofits, so I see myself doing some work with that.
Sure.
But I'm not entirely sure.
Great. Great. Well, you'll be successful, no matter where you land.
Now you mentioned how impressive all those senators and people were. All I have to say is, you are in those ranks.
Yep.
Thank you. You are, it's awe-inspiring to see all, you're all that you're doing.
Well, congratulations. We're so glad that you're here tonight. And it's just a, it's a real pleasure to have you with us, and we're incredibly proud of you. Thank you. We will move on. Item five tonight is public forum. Did we have anything for a public forum tonight?
There was no, there were no emails sent for public forum tonight. Thank you.
All right. In which case, item six is reports. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Elstad for some introductions.
So we have two different reports coming to you tonight. Our first report is coming from our staff. I believe our administrators from Oatana Middle School are here today. And so they'll come on in and take a seat. And I will turn the program over to our principal at Oatana Middle School, Julie Sullivan. And then I'll let the other administrators introduce themselves when they speak. So, Julie.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us here tonight. We're excited to be here.
One other note I would add is if you want, when you are speaking, yeah, you can go ahead and take your mask off when you're speaking to give you a little more, yeah.
A week of vacation. It makes it hard to put the mask back on, doesn't it? You know, we debated on what we wanted to share with you tonight, and usually we bring staff or students with us. And this time around, our staff are a little overwhelmed, getting ready for students coming back in the building. So we decided that we were going to present tonight. We thought we'd focus on our building culture. And we're going to talk a little bit about what we do for students and what we do for staff. And we just put some pictures up here just to show us, show you a little bit of the shenanigans and also some of the, you know, the good things that happen at Oatana Middle School. So as we look at this, we talk about the middle years being the best three years of your life. It's kind of our motto, with relationships being the focus of all we do. That's what we try to do anyway. So we want to talk about that culture. And obviously, academics are our top priority. But we didn't necessarily want to, you know, inundate you with that tonight, even though we are doing a lot of work right now with grading. You, we'll come back at some point and talk to you about what we're doing with grading. But we just wanted to share some other things and share with you how excited our staff is to be with kids and do kind of fun things for the kids. So with that, we're going to talk about some of the things that we do for our students.
And I'm Matt Zerbergen. I'm one of the assistant principals. This is year four for me here in the district and in the community, actually. So it's been a great transition for our family. When you talk about transition for our kids coming into sixth grade, that is a huge step from fifth grade into sixth grade. So when you focus on relationships, we've tried to build that really early and make a conscious effort by getting into all the fifth-grade classrooms. It's kind of been like being the grandparents and you go see your grandkids, and then you get them all hopped up on sugar. See you later. Because we get to share a lot of the cool things that we do at the middle school and get them excited and let them ask questions. And with that, you know, we've incorporated the web program. Myself, Lori Lofgren, and Emily Lechner have all been trained in our web program, Where Everyone Belongs. And it's an opportunity to build student leadership at the eighth-grade level and get them early in the school year in a mentorship program with our kids and get kids familiar with our eighth-grade leaders. And so it's been a wonderful marriage, and it's a huge thanks to our board for allowing us that sixth-grade orientation day to be just sixth grade in the building. Now, obviously, COVID changed the landscape of that a little bit for us. But in a normal year, we have those sixth graders in just by themselves with our eighth-grade leaders. And instead of worrying about trying to get to class on time, how do I get my locker open? They get a chance to just take a deep breath, be the only kid in the building, and have the web leaders kind of orientate them to what that day is going to look like and then what the school year is going to look like. So for us, I am part of the kind of PVIS or Husky Pride team, as we call it, where we're focused on positive behaviors and celebrating our kids. And really, we've had to think about how do we celebrate them with different opportunities? We have a school store, if you've ever been to the back parking lot, with a kind of a trailer sitting there. COVID, you can't put every kid in the school store. You've got to be a little bit more mindful. So we've gotten really creative, and we came up with our own kind of Amazon online school store shopping experience. So instead of having kids going into the store, we open it up every two weeks or so, and they can fill out a Google form and purchase items that way. And they're doing that through Husky Bucks Positive Referrals. When they get a positive referral, we go to the classroom, we celebrate them in the lunchroom, we give them a certificate. We do digital Husky Bucks now, which is like they're spending money for the school store. So we continue to find ways just to create opportunities to celebrate all of our kids at the middle school. And here's just an example of a positive referral that the teachers fill out, generates for the kids, sends it in an email. They also get a hard copy of it, and then we use our big screen for some March Madness Mario Kart. We've created challenges and activities throughout the course of March to kind of mirror the Basketball March Madness, putting our Husky Connections groups into teams and having challenges that take place during the course of the month.
So I'm Erin Helverson. I'm the other assistant principal at the middle school. And Matt talked about a couple of the big things, you know, some of the things we do with the sixth graders and some of our Husky Pride things. But we also try and do things just throughout the year to make the middle school a place that the kids want to be. We hear all the time from parents, you know, junior high was horrible. I hated the middle school. You know, worst years of my life. And our goal is to change that. We want to make it a place where kids want to be. And so we just included here a number of different things that we do on, you know, a pretty regular basis, whether it's things through student council with dress-up days. Our lunchroom is a place that we try and make really fun. If you've ever been to the middle school during lunch, it's kind of chaos, but that's kind of the way we want it. You know, kids can go outside for recess. Matt showed the picture on the previous side of the kids playing Mario Kart. That might be something we just pull out on a rainy day when we can't go out for recess. When it's not COVID, we have a foosball table. We have a game cart. We have bags up on the stage so kids can get up there and move around. We'll bring in the ping-pong tables. We've brought Kona Ice in. That's something we've done in the fall and in the spring. And just get outside, enjoy yourself a little bit, and make it not such a locked-in, rigid space so that the kids can come in and get to know us as people. If you spend any time in the cafeteria, you'll know that the adults in the cafeteria enjoy having fun in there just as much as the kids. That we have a microphone that probably never should have been given to any of us. You know, Julie's playing trivia with kids at lunch, just, you know, trying to make it a place where everybody feels welcome. It's a great chance for us to get to know kids. Other things that we do, you know, you can see, we highlighted a number of things there. One thing that I'll also touch on, this year, we really started to look at our PAW grade. Our PAW is a non-academic grade that really is looking at life skills and the behaviors that we're trying to nurture within our kids at the middle school. And so in all of their classes, our kids are getting scored on their PAW grades. So that would be practicing kindness, appropriate conduct and respect, and work habits. So really, how do I act? How do I treat others? And how am I coming to school and class prepared to learn? And that's really allowed us to marry a lot of the Husky Pride things that Matt talked about and really build that culture of this is what we expect at OMS. And at the same time, we're going to have fun with it. We know that you're a kid. We know that you're learning and growing, and that's what we expect. And we're going to help you get there in the long run. So a lot of fun things. Student of the Week Spotlight Students Courage Retreat for our seventh graders is a huge highlight for our seventh-grade year. Some of you have seen our PE Park Days that our PE team has put out here during distance learning on Wednesdays just to get kids moving. So a lot of great things.
We're going to talk about two events in particular here. One, we are OMS. I think a few of you were at that last year. It was held in February, where we did a couple of things. We showcased some students who shared their story. And their story could have been just an average upbringing, but somebody who's on the fishing team. Or it could have been somebody who's faced some diversity, and they were willing to share that. And then they put together a display, and we brought in, our cafeteria was jam-packed that night. We served a meal. Community members came. Some of you came and helped us serve. And then we had discussion. We had conversations about what school should look like, how, some racial, you know, equity questions that we discussed. And then they had a chance to go and hear from our students. It was, it was an amazing experience. And this year, we thought about doing something virtually in February. And at that point, it just, it just didn't seem like it felt right. Part of the, the point of it was bringing people into the building, getting people to sit down together to have those discussions, and then really focus on some of our students. But we have promised that we are OMS will be back next year.
And with we are OMS being kind of that annual event, we always continue to think about how do we bring student voice into, you know, weekly, monthly opportunities for kids? And so some of our ideas, when we sit down to banter, are kind of harebrained ideas. But we came up with one called Let's Talk OMS. So on March 3rd, we did our first listening session with students. And the focus question was, what should your school experience look like? And it was a chance just to listen to them. We did it virtually, and we had kids in person. It was a Wednesday distance learning day, so we did a session in the morning, and we did a session in the afternoon. Right now, we're looking at April 14th as our next Let's Talk OMS, and the focus is going to be on school rules and policies. And so we'll have kids sign up through Google. We had teachers attend last time as well. So we're continuing to kind of build that cohesiveness around, this is our school. This isn't my school. This isn't your school, but our school. How do we get all those ideas to the table?
That kind of piggybacks on an activity we did with students the year before where we pulled in some focus groups and talked to kids. And so this was just kind of a building block on that. Now, we want to talk a little bit about the staff, because we know our students are our main focus. But we also believe that if you have a staff that believes in things together, everything just goes better. And, and we happen to think we have a pretty phenomenal staff at the middle school. So some of the things that we do for them, I'm just going to focus on a couple of them. Fun Food Fridays, once a month, the admin team, we go out and buy snacks, and then we interrupt classes briefly. And are kind of obnoxious, but we bring staff treats. And of course, the kids are like, well, come, we don't get, we're like, you get it all the time from us in the cafeteria and stuff. This is for our staff. And the staff kind of, they know it, and they look forward to Fun Food Friday. One thing I want to talk about is Spark. This was actually started prior to me going to the junior high at that time. And it was a weekly staff meeting. And we have kept that up, and we meet now on Wednesday mornings. And we really kind of amped it up last spring. When we had to go distance, we met every Wednesday morning virtually. And, you know, to see 90-some staff members pop online. And we try not to cover business-related things. We try not to get into that, and it's all positives. Staff can shout out each other. When we're in person, we give out these cheesy little trophies where they come pick one up and they, they, you know, call somebody out for something good that they did. Could be a para, a cook, a fellow teacher. And now we just do it virtually, and it's actually kind of fun. We made videos all last spring for our staff while we were in the building and they were at home. But it's, really has created that, I think, that family within our, our staff. Right now, we have a couple of different equity kind of initiatives going on. And these are voluntary by our staff. And we have, one where we just, we have some discussions. We come in and talk. Maybe it's about an article. We've had 40-plus participants at those sessions before and after school. And right now, we have 20 staff members who volunteered to take a course called Leading for Equity. We're in it as well. And so we do different modules, and then we get together and discuss them. Pretty, pretty candid discussions and pretty heartfelt discussions about where we are and what we need to do. And the last thing I want to share with you that we wanted to share is just what we think, how awesome our staff is. We have really tried to embrace the culture of giving at the middle school and supporting others. Last year, as a staff, we raised over $12,000 for various things in the community and at school. This year, from July through February, we're at $8,399 that staff members have given out of their pocket. We've had retirement, and we had a staff member who kind of went through a difficult family situation, so we raised money for that. At the holiday time, we put a feeler out and said, we stopped giving gifts to each other in the office. And instead, we started pitching in, and then we are adopting families. And this year, we threw it out to our staff and said, what do you think? We got $2,125, and we went down to the public utilities and paid off some utility bills for some of our families. We bought gift cards for families. Were able to deliver those. Pretty, pretty awesome. This fall, for United Way, we raised $2,500 at the middle school. And just recently, for the former Food Shelf Community Pathways, I think we had about half of what the district raised as a whole with $2,146. And I think what that just shows is that our staff, when we put a feeler out, they're kind of on board. And they're willing to say, we're in. We're in with you, you know? What do you need? And sometimes, that's all we have to say, hey, what if we get behind this? And in the spring, we typically do some fundraisers for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and From the Heart. And we kind of split money with them. Sometimes, it's paying to wear jeans on a non-gene day at school. Sometimes, we'll, you know, do silent auction things, and sometimes, it's just pitching in money. So we think that that just shows where our staff is in their unity in the, in the middle school. So that's a brief overview. We know we had to be fairly short. We just wanted to highlight some things that we're doing at the middle school for our students and our staff. Open to any questions if you have any.
Oh, I bet there are.
So I'm just wondering about, I know you didn't touch on grades or anything like that. And I read an article that testing is now going to be happening this year. Are you prepared for that?
Well, this is Erin's, that's one of her big assignments, and she does a phenomenal job of, like, organizing the testing. I mean, that I have no problem. That's going to be taken care of because Erin does a great job with that. You know, for us, it's going to be a dipstick on where kids are. We're not going to put, and I don't always put a huge amount of, we, we look at test results. We look more at what are our teachers teaching and how are our students doing within that classroom, you know, and what they're doing there. But I don't know if you want to speak to testing, but she's pretty organized, and we're ready to go, even though we're not real thrilled about bringing all of our kids back. And then the first thing we do is test.
Our, our staff's been great in just knowing that this is, this is what we need to do. We're actually starting two weeks from today. Having one-to-one devices has made a huge difference in the scheduling of our testing. You know, before, we had to rotate through the computers we had in the building. Now, every kid has a computer. And we're really, really hoping that they remember to bring them charged the day of testing. That's like the number one, right? They have to be charged. We are bringing in our distance learners as well. They're coming in on Wednesday so that they have an opportunity to test in a smaller, you know, small-group environment for those kids that are all virtual. But we're ready to go. We'll be going solid the month of April and doing all three, math reading, and then we do science in eighth grade.
I'm looking around.
I got, I got a question. I get, can you just, you know, not being in your building, you know, I, there've been so many times I've wanted to, like, just show up and see what's going on, but then I go, oh, wait, no, I can't do that. And so can you just speak a little bit about, you know, I love to hear all of these, you know, morale-building and team-building and culture-building kinds of events. Talk about what those feel like, you know, in this hybrid model, right, with half the students. There's probably pros and cons. I'm kind of interested in that. And then what do you foresee, you know, in the coming weeks, when you utilize all of these kinds of things that you developed? You know, how's it going to be different? Or what? Can you just talk about those two contrasting realities?
Well, I think we would all agree that it has been, you know, with half the kids in the building, just, there's, there's a calmness, you know, to the building, and they come in and they go right to their first-hour classes. And, and they hang out until the bell rings. And that has, there's just less drama. And middle school lives on drama, and so we kind of like that. The cafeteria has been, has been great, you know? We've got it figured out. We added a lunch period. So sixth grade, there's, half of them are going to go during the second-hour block. And then we've added some tables. That's what we were doing today, and dotting the tables to make sure. But we think that's all going to go pretty well. And it has been nice, but I think we've also gotten to know students a little bit better.
Yeah.
Because it's a smaller, you know, group of kids, and teachers would say the same thing. And I, you know, honestly, a year break and having all kids in the building, I think we're, we're a little bit anxious, nervous, excited. You know, just that, that feel again. But we'll continue with some of our, our stuff. And I don't know if you guys want to jump in on anything there, too?
Yeah, I, I think the one thing we've emphasized since we became a middle school was that relationship piece. And we start each year releasing, you know, 60% relationships, 40% content, start the year. Tomorrow's the first day of school all over again. So while they've had all the kids during the course of the year, they've had half on any given day. And so that building relationships and that cohesiveness within the classroom, you've got two different groups of students coming together, that's going to be critical.
I think the other piece of it is the relationships that our staff develop with students, but also, you know, learning from Julie and the example she sets and just building relationships with the staff in the building as adults. And our staff has been absolutely phenomenal in the last year just with all the changes that have come at them, left, you know, one after another, after another. And I think the things that we have really tried to do to build that trust and that culture with our staff, because they have been, they've been behind us and with us and in front of us, you know, the whole way. And so that's, that's made it a much easier task. They're anxious, just like we are for tomorrow, but they're excited too.
Thank you. It's going to be great tomorrow.
It is. So excited.
I have one other question. So it's kind of, so again, you lived in the world pre-COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Now, part of COVID, now you've got your students back.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything that you have now implemented because of COVID virtually that you now, that you didn't used to be, that you are looking at maybe continuing at a virtual model?
Yeah, you know, yes, we've had some discussions about that. Even looking at next year, you know, like, one of the things that has happened this year on Wednesdays, we have a lot of students who are in our building, you know? And it's kind of started with a small number, you know, coming in to get caught up or just do some work. I think at our last Wednesday, we had about 150 kids in there who, you know, needed some help from teachers. And so we're trying to think of next year, how do we build something like that in, an intervention time within our school day? Obviously, not a day that we don't have kids for the day, but maybe it's an hour and a half once a week. We're talking about an intervention time where kids can get that time, because otherwise, it's hard. It becomes an equity issue. Who can get to school early or stay after school to get some of that help? Or maybe come to Saturday school if they have a ride, you know? So, I mean, there are some pieces of that. I, I know that teachers technologically are going to incorporate some things that have been helpful. But we also heard at our Let's Talk OMS from our students who said, can we do a little less of this and a little more of, like, I want to write. I want to get my hands on some, some physical things and not just be behind a computer screen. So I think that was good for us to hear too, and for the staff to hear, that kids want a blend of that. Not just on, you know, online, but also doing some things. So that's one of the things we're doing with staff, though. What do we want to keep? And, you know, what are we to say? Like, we tried it. Not our favorite thing, or that didn't go as well as we, we would like. But, you know, we're, we've definitely learned some things that we will incorporate.
Nikki's question was such a good question. She synthesized what I was wanting to ask. And I'm curious, because I wanted to ask it of all three of you, and Erin and Matt. I mean, all three of you, your body language said everything when Nikki was asking you the question. So Erin and Matt, I mean, what do you think?
Well, I think we've had enough discussion that first and foremost, next year, when we start the fall especially, we can't go back to just doing things the way we've always done them. If we do that, we've done something completely wrong, because we have at our fingertips opportunities to do things more efficiently. And I think what we talk about all the time is more efficiently for all of our kids. And with all of our kids in mind, and so.
You have a good example of that?
Well, I think Julie touched on it. I think when you look at intervention. Um, well, I think Julie touched on it. I think when you look at um intervention and opportunity to build intervention into our day, we've figured out some ways to logistically make it happen to where it could be efficient for our teachers. And again, target kids that need that extra academic support while celebrating kids that are doing well and trying to get those kids to move there as well. So that's, that's a piece, for example, with Infant and Campus where we have a real opportunity in that system to build that efficiency in.
I think another example is, you know, technology's scary. Um, and it's, it's scary for our teachers and so we have had teachers who maybe dabbled and some teachers who were phenomenal and they would tell you that, you know, I love trying new things in technology. And others that would be like, nah, no, not my thing, right? Um, but we haven't had a choice within the last year. And we have seen, I can think of an example of a specific sixth grade teacher that all of her colleagues in sixth grade would tell you would be the absolute last person they would ever go to for technology help, who very quickly became the guru on a new software that we're using um and took it on and was helping others. And, you know, the relationships we've had between, you know, maybe a younger eighth grade teacher and um a sixth grade teacher who is nearing retirement, who would not normally interact in a building our size, sitting down and working together on something. So I think that having to jump in feet first, having to embrace some of this and then going, you know what, I can do this. Uh, uh, this is, this is manageable and it works and I like it or I'm good at it.
Thank you.
Is there anything that the kids usually look forward to in the spring at the middle school level that they're actually going to get to do this year?
Yeah, um, well, one of our, our, um, well, first of all, we have the Kyle the Cam Leadership Award. And that's been a pretty big, that's, that's our culminating activity for the year, uh, where we acknowledge not just those um students, but also like our sixth grade students. Um, we're going to do it in a little different fashion. We don't think we'll be able to have all one thousand students in the gym this year, but we're going to livestream it. And what, we're going to make it happen because it didn't happen last year when things happened so fast and then we were just apart and it was just too difficult to do. And then I think the other thing is we usually end the year with our Husky Pride celebration, kids who have earned it through our paw, you know, things like that. Um, eighth grade has traditionally gone to Valley Fair if they've earned it in the water park for sixth grade and, you know, and we're not sure what that's going to look like, but we think we can still make the day happen, some fun events happen. They just might look a little bit different. Maybe they're going to be out on fat tire bikes or um in classrooms doing the activities in the gyms. Uh, it might not be Valley Fair, but we think we can still make something like that happen. That was a disappointing um loss for the kids last year.
And how do they get their, their bucks?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of things do they?
So, you know, like a teacher might see them, um, like turn things around academically, work really hard. Maybe they helped a classmate. Maybe they're just a positive person who just brings something to the classroom every day. Um, it could be, I'm trying to think of other wins that we.
At lunch, I, we have them, we can give them digitally, right? So all of a sudden I've got, you know, one little guy who says, oh, wait, 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 there's a, there's a ball back there. I saw a ball. And he runs and goes and picks it up and brings it back to the ball cart. Hey, thanks for doing that. I really appreciate it, you know, um, just those little things or yeah.
A lot of them come from the classroom and we have also like a spotlight student where they get to choose, the teachers get to choose, um, like a student of the week type of thing for the newspaper. That comes with some husky bucks. Um, really acknowledging the good that we see in our students.
Mr. Elstad.
You know that I'm going to wrap this thing up. First of all, I have a special place in my heart for middle school because as the three of these people know, whenever I get a chance to be at the middle school, I'm going to be there. Especially if I get to walk around the cafeteria and talk with kids and do that. So it's been a lot of fun to do that. But three things that really hit me with this presentation tonight. Not only are you incorporating culture for both staff and students, which is probably the biggest thing in a middle school environment. Between the ages of eleven and thirteen, academics take a backseat. And you can, I don't care what anyone says, that's the way things are in a, in a middle school. But relationships and spending the right time with students to make appropriate relationships, but also to continue to reinforce the good that we see. And to really help them start to formulate, how will things be in their life? Because if you look at the research, it tells you that at age thirteen, most kids have decided how they're going to believe about something. So we have some really formative years here. And when people talk about middle school and junior high, they kind of say, ugh, oh, you work at the middle school? Well, my answer when I had that opportunity was absolutely I work at the middle school. Because we used to say you're either be committed or be committed with that work. But it is so critical because those formative years and learning how to be a young adult starts to happen. Although we don't want to teach or, or treat thirteen-year-olds like they're adults because they're not. They're still, there's not a lot of frontal lobe development yet, but they're working on it, which I think is so fun. But three things that I heard, the efforts with equity. And really calling out, and I look at the work that your staff is doing, that you're leading with staff to understand how their teaching practices need to incorporate racial and cultural understandings within that. And what are we changing about our delivery so that all students feel welcome and valued in the classrooms? Secondly, the student voice that you use. Students will tell us about their desired daily experience as adults. We just have to listen. And many times we don't listen because we say, oh, you're a seventh grader. We know how seventh graders are. Seventh graders are very intuitive about their daily experience if we just listen. And I applaud the three of you as well as your staff about listening to student voice. I've had the unique experience pre-COVID to spend time every other month with a group of student advisory. And then when I visit with Julie about the time we've spent together, I give her some feedback and she'll say, and there's never been a time where she says, oh, that's not how it really is. She'll say, okay, now we need to know, now we know what we can work on here. And the last thing that I wanted to point out is just the massive opportunities that students have. And it isn't all about academic learning, but it's about the ways that they can interact with one another. But think about the academic experience our middle school kids do get. I would put that experience up and all the exploratory courses that are possible against anybody. Because when kids go to high school now, they have started to learn about what it means to be a photographer and what it means to be a forensic scientist. And those are just a couple that come to mind. These are great experiences and we should be proud. You should be proud of the middle school culture that you're developing and nurturing. But as a community and as a school board, we should be proud of the experiences our middle school kids can get. And I can't wait for eight hundred middle schoolers to come back to school tomorrow.
One thousand, one thousand.
One thousand, exactly. But we're excited about that opportunity and what you said, Julie, I think is important. Although technology, we kind of say, well, the kids, technology and kids go hand in hand, isn't always the case. But they also want those positive adult interactions. And that's what bringing kids back in is one of the benefits that comes with that risk benefit analysis about do we or don't we? And so thank you for your efforts. I couldn't be prouder. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the three of you. Much appreciated. Under Reports item B tonight would be a presentation from Deb McDermott Johnson. I'll, once again, turn things over to Mr. Elstad for some introductions.
So now we're kind of traveling around the aged groupings and of course with community education, I often joke with Deb that this is our cradle to coffin department. And I don't say that morbidly, but I say that to remind our school board that community ed really runs into the very first encounter that we have with babies in our district and new parents all the way through some of our folks that are doing the fifty-five Alive courses and many of the other sort of senior courses and other different enrichment opportunities for our adults. So, as I'm waiting for Deb to pull up her presentation, we're very blessed to have Deb McDermott Johnson working in our district as our Director of Community Ed. And without further ado, Deb, you, you're ready to fly. I will turn it over to you.
Fabulous. And I'm going to probably speak faster than I should because the important people in this presentation are sitting over at Roosevelt and have been since four thirty, waiting to talk to all of you.
Ah.
So we have adult students from our new student leadership um group is going to connect with us. And so Sarah, you're going to get us.
Yeah, you'll just click the.
Oh, I click the link when we're ready to go. So here we go. Well, we did, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you about our English literacy and civics education. This is a special grant that we went after. We're actually, it's a three-year grant. We're in our second year of implementation and have not had an opportunity to visit with you about that. Um, this was a grant that we very intentionally went after. Uh, the Department of Ed has changed its focus over the years. It has traditionally really been about intensive language instruction for adults leading to employment. And uh, we actually were recipient of that grant back in seventeen, eighteen, sixteen, seventeen and then ended up losing out in the competition for the following two years and then came back this last time. And I have to tell you a little secret. We didn't go for the full enchilada. We, they uh put eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grants out there with a hundred thousand dollar cap. And so strategically I knew if I came in after that fifty thousand, we had a clean shot at it because everybody else I knew was going for the hundred thousand and sure enough, it worked. Plus I think we have a really strong proposal. And if it wasn't for our current pandemic situation, we'd be a little bit further in our implementation than we are. But we'll talk a little bit about that as we move through this. The program requirements for this particular grant, um, again, the language instruction is certainly a part of it. Um, but they want us to move beyond what I would call daily living language and move into academic instruction that will allow folks to move into sustainable employment. They had two additional criteria that have been added to the get back and that is about career pathways work that leads to self-sufficiency. That was one of the big changes in this last three-year round. And also that it integrates with the local workforce development system. And as you may not be aware, we do not have a workforce development office in Oatana. We work, have to work out of the office that's infarable. We're working on that. We have an office space dedicated to them at Roosevelt. And as soon as the pandemic's over, we're hoping that they will be able to uh put a staff member on site. And just by way of background, there's now six components. Originally the top was what we were really all about, functional literacy, uh, plus it become, get, developing some fluency in language and then of course the civics education, which we did the last time. We did a lot of field trips and had um local um institutions and organizations come in and speak to our group so that our families had a sense of what being part of community in Oatana. What's new for us now is the adult education and literacy about the academics and, and moving that specific to workforce or post-secondary placement. The workforce preparation is critical because that's where we're really working with workforce development. Not on just the job-seeking skills, but also those soft skills. What does it mean to show up for work on time? What, what does consistent attendance look like? How do you communicate on the work site? What are, what are the expectations of the American work site? And of course, that changes with every industry. Um, and what, what we have done is focus all of our grant on the three hottest job markets in Oatana. And that is manufacturing, healthcare and construction. So we're trying to provide um some experiences to go along with that. Um, the workforce, well, let me go back to the literacy piece. Um, that's really where our three um market, job markets, where we spend the bulk of our time because we use authentic materials, um textbooks and workplace materials to teach the language and academic acquisition so that folks are grounded in these careers. They begin to pick up the vocabulary. We do mini labs where we actually have a set of tool kits and while we learned the difference between a flathead and a Phillips screwdriver and we ended up building birdhouses um with, with the tools that we had in our box. And we had plans to build bigger things, but the pandemic sort of brought that to a close for us. But, but those are the kinds of things, a very authentic, realistic education uh for folks that they will encounter in an actual work site. The workforce training is the, the part that is most new to us, where we're moving into internships, job shadows, mentoring. Eventually ADE will be judged by its ability to place people in long-term sustainable employment and post-secondary education. That has not been criteria that we've necessarily been held accountable for, always a hoped outcome, but not necessarily um the standard. And we're very quickly moving in that direction as we move forward with that. Um, in terms, this is also where we do academies, where what we call on-ramps, where we um, instead of folks jumping right into CNA instruction, we'll do some on-ramp programming where we will, we will acquaint them with vocabulary and some of the preliminary processes so that once they get to the college level and take an actual CNA instructional course, they've had some exposure to the content and to some of the professionals that work in the field so they can begin to really find themselves within that profession. And then our hope is always that once the CNA, then we move into LPN and any of the other occupations that, you know, obviously are, they're using healthcare as our example. This next slide is, is kind of, um, to be honest with you, I think is the reason we got the grant. We, we spent a great deal of time thinking about what does this look like? What's the structure? What's the flow that goes with this? And you'll notice on the left of the language acquisition, civics, employability. Here's the learning labs that I talked about before where it's a very specific skill. If it's healthcare, we are, we're going to learn how to take temperatures. If it's construction where you've got tape measures, measuring everything in the building. You know, very, starting out very simple and then advancing folks as they can. We also are teaching all of our students regardless of whether they're coming to us as beginners or advanced learners. That's a little unusual. Most programs are focusing on the intermediate and upper level students. And we're, we believe that if we're helping people find career pathways, we're starting them very early on in their language acquisition. Moving into the middle section, there's our internships and our job shadows, job site experiences, our healthcare academies for those who um know what they want to do and want to move into post-secondary ed, we'll probably start them at that particular point. Um, but included, you'll notice also is the accuplacer prep because a lot of our students with a second language are oftentimes misappropriately placed in that testing process. And so we have to work harder in helping them advocate. And then also, as you see, that inter-agency navigation team down below. That is um something that we kind of, uh, we tripped across that one in a very um happy way. In that we have learned that we can move our students through our programs faster. When we are sitting at the table with workforce development, they may have a social worker, they may have a family advocate. Um, we've had some folks who even have court-appointed supervisors. And if we can sit down together as a team with that individual and talk through what their life, they want for their life, we can make much faster progress than that student telling that their life story to every organization that touches their lives. And as you might imagine, for a lot of our families, there are a lot of community agencies involved in their world. And so this has really helped um provide them a high level of dignity as well as um an, sort of an expeditious way to get the services and the supports that they need to move forward. There are very few programs. We're just now starting to pick up across the state. It's not the easiest thing to do. Um, but we have found a way to make that happen. So here. All right. So Ms. Lydia, can you hear us?
I can, maybe. Can you, can you see us?
We can see you. So uh, welcome to our Student Leadership Council, which is another part of our grant. Lydia, I'm going to let you take it from here.
Sounds good. Thanks for letting us be here, everyone. Uh, my name is Lydia Yankee. Um, I am the Adult Programs Specialist here at Roosevelt. Um, I also do a little bit with the Community Ed brochure. Uh, most importantly for tonight, I um am the staff liaison or the navigator to the Student Leadership Council. Um, and they're going to take it, take it away.
Hello, my name is Maria Delores. I am um Mexican and my nickname is Lolita. I am an ESL student with a teacher make and I'm going to talk about the objectives of this council. Um, the first objective is that each individual member of this group is going to gain career by experiencing um different learning and leadership opportunities. Where we are going to know, uh, learn more about what leadership is, our communication style skills, active uh listening about a local job opportunities and resumes, cover letters, et cetera. And also we are going to uh meet more community leaders and influence the ERC programming by giving opinions and advice that reflect the cultural diversity of the members of this group. And the last one, the most important one, is that we want to ensure that all uh the. that all the adult learners are career, college, and life-ready by mentoring new students and doing other activities. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Puello. I am from Venezuela. I am a student in the ESL program here at the Adult Learning Center. To achieve our goal as Student Leadership Council, we will be meeting every six weeks. And each week, it will be about one hour. In February, we had our first meeting in which we told about we want to achieve a Student Leadership Council and about the different activities that we can carry out in the summer with the participation of the students from the Adult Learning Center and the community, community in general. And in today's meeting, we will study our expectation as a group and the role that each one will forfeit. Thank you.
Okay, this is Ulima, Ulima Gota. I am from Ethiopia. I am a mother of five children. I've been in Oatana for ten years, since 2010. We are very happy to meet with you guys because you are especially for us. We are expecting a lot of things from you guys. That's why we are here to learn more from you because we are here to improve our English as adults, mothers, to support the kids. So we need good English, we need good pronunciation, we need good education. Even though we know that we are mothers, we need to learn more thing from you guys. We are expecting more opportunity from you guys. Thank you.
My name is Ahmed. I'm living in Oatana for six years. I'm here today in meeting, second meeting, the, the counselor, the leadership counselor. I am, I'm there for five kids. I'm glad with so many, but I need the improved English because they're bad English. But I need to English because the second language, English. I'm there because my children is the youngest. I need to help my child. Also, I need to, to prove to, up to language, the English. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being so brave to share with us tonight. Lydia, did you have more to share or can we open to questions?
Certainly send your questions our way.
All right.
Board members, questions?
How many students do you have enrolled in this program?
Well, we currently have a hundred and sixty students that are enrolled in ABE. Sixty-seven are meeting what we call participant status, which is obviously down significantly because of the environment that we're in. Of that sixty-seven, three-quarters of those are ESL students, much like the folks that we see on the screen tonight.
Where do you find your students?
They often find us. Perhaps our students can respond to that. The question was, how do students find the Adult Learning Center?
The staff chose us.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, we, we are the student ESL program here and the staff chose us.
Right, staff chose you for the...
I didn't know about the ESL classes here.
How, and how do you find out about classes in this building?
Oh, okay. Um, I, I...
Oh, my God.
Sorry. I knew the program from the, the, the new...
Yes.
Yes. The Oatana Community Educational News. Yeah, news.
Okay.
I knew about this school because of my classmate. And he knew that it was a school here in the town. And I was just waiting for the chance to subscribe to the class and enroll in the, in the class. My internet.
And another thing also, like me now, I knew this class when I come as a refugee in 2010. We got this when we meet with the human services, with the caseworker. They told us about the ESL class to take, as a, to take English as a second language since we are refugees, we don't know English yet. And 2010, it is the time when I, I come here to learn English as a second language. But when I find, I got that job, I stop it. And in 2013, I want to work. But now, since I get injured at work, I stop working and come back to work, to learn English, to get, to improve my English, to get my GT certificate and get a better job.
Excellent. And they, wonderful. You just captured the three main ways folks find us. They, it's often through our print marketing. We have mouth-to-mouth referrals, our family referrals in this case, and certainly our, any of our agency connections in the community. So wonderful job.
Lydia, can each of the students talk about their career choices?
Sure. Yeah. Do you want to talk about your career choices or what you're interested in?
As I would like to start. I'm just new in the country. I've been here for a year. So, and I am, I have, I studied a bachelor's degree in Mexico. And I would like to know the way to transfer those studies here, how to get more job opportunities in the town. And I'm currently working. I would like to find better opportunities to improve my skills here just to, to be a better worker. And also, I would, I would like to become an English teacher or a Spanish teacher sometimes. So this is a great opportunity to start.
And for me, back home, I didn't finish my high school. But in Ethiopia, we are, we are learning different language, Amari. So when we got here, now everything will be new for us because back home in Ethiopia, we are learning different language. But according to the opportunity what we got here, we need, I need to learn English as a second language. Even though I learned a different language back home, here now, my opinion, I need to learn English to get a good pronunciation, good writer, good reader, good listener, to communicate with the community together, to understand each other, and get a good work, good job, to succeed in my life and my family. Yes, I need to help my family. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about business?
And also, I was mentioning the business last time to Lydia because here, we are driving to Minneapolis. There is a food called Injera in Ethiopia back home when we were there. So we used to drive to Minneapolis to buy those food. But I, I myself, I know how to make that. So I mentioned that idea to Lydia last time. How I'm going to get the license to start a small business? I need to start it, but I don't know where to go, where I'm going to get help to do this. I don't have anything to get it. But if any opening door to help me to start a, a small business, that's what I need.
Ahmed, do you want to talk about your business interests?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Um, well, I am a mechanical engineer. But I need to improve my English. I want to do a master with a relationship with my career. And after, I try to fi- find a better job with relationship with, with engineer. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll wave them goodbye. Okay, folks, we're going to let you go.
Before you go, before you go, Lydia, before you go, I want the students to know I'm very proud of the work you're doing. And I'm proud of the people that you are and the people you're going to become. And thank you for being courageous because it takes a lot of courage as an adult to learn things again. All of you are very talented. And now, when you're getting that Master of the English Language, which I'm just amazed listening to you because I took four years of Russian and I still can't remember how to speak Russian because that was a long time ago. But I'm so proud of all of you. Thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight and to share your stories as well to just an inspiration for the work you want to continue to do and how hard you're willing to work and the passion you have for moving not only yourself but your family forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
If you have any questions about our students or if you want to come to a meeting, reach out to me. We're here, we would like to chat. So please do us all.
Goodbye, y'all.
Thank you so much.
All right.
This is your best meeting ever, Deb. That was great.
Yeah, they're pretty inspiring. They're pretty inspiring.
See, I do have one quick question, Deb, maybe.
Yeah.
So I will just tell you, I've been in their shoes. I mean, I've been in a foreign country, learning a language as a second language as an adult. So I kind of feel what they're living. My question to you is, how much English are they speaking in their normal course of a day if they don't have instruction? And do they have, correlated to that, do they have adult, you know, mentors? You know how we mentor and we do Big Brothers, Big Sisters for Children? But do we do that? Is that part of this program? Is there an opportunity there?
Yes, that is part, that is one of the services that we are hoping to pull together. Our biggest challenge, as you might guess, is that we just came to a screeching halt. We should, this council should have been running last fall. And that just wasn't going to happen. So we finally in February said, do or die. We're going to make this thing happen. And yes, so that certainly is something that we need to do. Most of the folks you see there are working and they're all working in English-language-based businesses in towns. So they are getting a fair amount of English every day. Yep. It's oftentimes one of the differences I see between our adults and our students, that they tend to look for opportunities to immerse themselves in the language. So that, as you, just as you say, they're willing to risk not being understood for the sole purpose of getting experience.
Very inspiring. Thank you.
I have one follow-up question. So you had mentioned early on that you had this grant before. You lost it and now you've got it back again. So I imagine that you have data from back then and you're probably continuing tracking?
Right.
Okay. So what type of, I guess, are there any requirements from that grant that says that X percent have to attain work or in order for you to have a successful vision of this grant?
I think there probably is and I didn't look that back up for tonight because, but I did have a conversation with Kim, who does our data management from the center last week. And she did talk about how fast this group is moving up. We have a new software online. And despite our pandemic instruction, as I call it, our students are still making progress. They are really embracing the online, online learning. Many of these students also come at night. There have been years we couldn't sell an evening class seat. And this year, we've got two rooms full of folks that are coming in. They're really eager to move forward. There's so much employment opportunity in this community right now. And while that's wonderful, I'll be honest with you, it is totally challenging us. That's why we have sixty-seven adults, because they're all working. And I'm amazed at how many jobs they're working and how long a shift they're working. There's just not a lot of them, a lot of themselves, left over to come to class. These four are truly, truly an exception to the, to the rule right now. Folks are really immersing themselves in the opportunity.
Good for them.
So what that percent, I'm sorry, Nikki, I don't have those specifics and I can sure share those back to you. I don't remember what we promised we said we'd do. We're hoping for a lot of forgiveness this year, right?
That's what I was wondering too, because I imagine COVID has...
Yes, yes. And but we also are working very hard to deliver on the key components that we believe got us this grant so that we have a clean shot at another three years. The work that's being done on pathways at the high school is extremely exciting to us because it aligns completely with what we've been needing to do. We don't have those kinds of facilities. And to be honest with you, in our work with Riverland, they really want our students to travel to the Austin or Albert League campuses for this, for their trades instruction. And that's really been a challenge for our adults. So having coursework that's in our community that I'm hoping somehow we can, we can weave together at some point in time once the new high school is up and running, is going to just take us to a whole other level with adults. All right.
Ms. Elstad?
No, and I was just going to comment on that, Deb. I think, you know, we, Deb has been a real, you know, proponent and advocate for our Adult Basic Ed program. And in fact, at nearly all of our monthly meetings, Deb and I will have a regular conversation about the progress that we're making. And I think we've really shifted away from this program that is just sort of a graduate equivalent diploma program. We've shifted now to diploma is the basement level for us. We're going to go deeper with that because we want to get them the work skills and things that are necessary to help them be successful. Our Career Pathway Program that Deb just commented on are going, is going, will be a nice marriage for us because I think our total vision is, is that we start to marry up the programs of career pathways as well as these opportunities so that some of our students may be co-located. So they may be taking in our nursing lab at the new high school. They might be taking courses with some of our high school students and then offering evening opportunities for them to use those nursing labs that will be fully equipped with the equipment that they need to have more hands-on experiences. So I think our vision, and then I think about the work that we've done and that Deb and I have worked together with the Chamber of Commerce because we recognize that there's a need for employees. And what I keep on telling the Chamber members is, we happen to have those employees that they need. And so with that, but it doesn't mean it's going to be a typical experience because a lot of our employers need those employees now. And what we can do is provide some of those base-level skills, but continue to develop their portfolio all the way through this. So maybe the job they have, they see themselves moving upward and upward mobility within that particular company or manufacturing company or other trades as well.
Absolutely. The lion's share of our students have what we call entry-level jobs, as you might guess. They love the work that they're doing, but they, they struggle with advancement. And a lot of that is language acquisition and, and also credentials. And we know that if we can get at least a high school equivalency with a, at some level of certificate, whether it be at a six-month, a two-year, or a full-on bachelor's, that's the tipping point out of poverty.
Right. Agreed.
And to long-term. And many of the businesses in Oatana have education benefits, which these folks can tap into as soon as we can get those skills hot enough to get after them.
Yeah. Thank you, Deb, for your continued advocacy for all of our students. I mentioned cradle to coffin because we go the other way with our babies that we work with. But really, it's the work now with our adults and to try to meet the needs of a community. This community needs employees. And so we're doing our best to kind of take a shot at that from all different angles. And certainly, these students are inspiring for us to be part of that.
We pride ourselves on being community builders.
Yes.
We may not be the pillars hanging out front of the high school, but we're, we're right there at the base.
Just as sturdy. Right. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Deb. As we move on tonight, item seven would be general information. Would any of you have a question for Ms. Elstad with regard to the enrollment report or anything that you found in that section of your packet? No? No. Uh, we will move on. Uh, Daniella, I'm gonna start over on your side of the room tonight with Board Forum. Do you have anything to bring to us for Board Forum?
Not anything new, but I would just like to say I'm very excited to return back to school tomorrow.
Jolene? Nikki?
Um, I had um the MSBA board meeting. Um, I believe you all received an email. Um, for me, the the strangest thing was I got the email and it said from me. It was from me.
Your picture was right there.
Yeah, so so that was, that was very interesting. It pretty much spelled everything out. Um, but I've learned that there are a lot of opportunities, um lots of education opportunities for all of us to attend. And so, I'm learning lots and asking lots and lots of questions as I'm sure you all figured out what.
Good. Lori, anything?
Um, nope, nothing tonight.
I don't either. Eric?
Um, we did have facilities meeting prior to to tonight's meeting. Um, we will be going over later here in part ten, part D, the new high school partial contracts words. And I can tell everything has come back on budget.
Good. Did you wanna mention groundbreaking?
Groundbreaking. May sixth is when we're aimed at doing groundbreaking or working on, we'll begin an announcement out.
Terrific. Deborah, anything for Board Forum?
No.
Okay. Uh, anybody have any questions for Mr. Elstad with regard to what you had in your packet, in the administrative report?
Yeah, I just wanna make a few different comments for you regarding a a multitude of different areas. The first of which I'll just piggyback on Daniella's comment about coming back to school tomorrow. So, we are going to return two thousand three hundred students tomorrow to in-person learning. And what I, and and yes, it is jubilation for us. But I also wanna share that um bringing students back has come with lots of preparation. I wanna make sure I publicly recognize our administration and staff for all of the work that they have been doing to prepare to bring students back. It's not like flipping a switch, and I think I've shared that with you as a board before. Uh, there's lots of things that have to take place. Um, we're gonna do our best. And what I can tell you is we always make safety our priority and we're gonna continue to move forward in that fashion. Uh, within that, uh, we're going to take things week by week and see how it goes. Um, we know that returning students, because it has been over one year since all of our students have been back together. So, it'll be joyful, it'll be stressful, it'll be anxiety-producing, there'll be lots of emotion around that. But the thing is, is as I, as I talked with Mr. Cath and with with Ms. Sullivan and and Mr. Shavers today about students returning tomorrow, the staff is in a great place because this is the work that they've wanted to do for a long time and now they're getting that opportunity. It will be a bit different having thirty kids in a classroom versus fifteen or sixteen. And I think that's the challenge is, how do we make that switch? Uh, but again, they're excited to have students back and then certainly as your superintendent, I couldn't be more proud. And I can't wait to stand at OHS tomorrow morning and greet students as they come in. Um, parking passes will be at a premium, so get there soon if you, if you want a good parking spot. I'm looking over at both Portosa and Daniella on that one. So, a couple of other things related to COVID. Uh, I've had a few questions about prom and graduation. So, we received some additional guidance last week from the Minister of Department of Health in regard to how we're going to conduct both of those events. Yes, we are having a prom. Prom will be done differently this year in that we're going to do it at the Four Seasons, which we've always done, but there will not be a public grand march. Uh, it will be an event for students. And uh, there will be a way for uh parents to see their uh children dressed up in their lovelies, which is great because um they will be take, a professional photograph will be taken and there'll be a live stream of those photos that will come up for parents to buy if they want or to just observe them on Oatana Live. Uh, the event is running from eight to midnight. We are tying prom and after-prom together. So, we're not gonna have different events where different mingling could happen within that as part of the COVID protocol. The other thing I would add about prom is that the Department of Health has asked that we keep it to groups of six. And that those groups of six kind of distance from other groups of six. Um, those things look really good on paper. We are going to do our best to help with that, but I would also say one of the things I think students are missing the most is being together. And so, like I said, we're going to do our best and we're going to have kids wear masks. And I think if you asked most students, they would say, if it means we can be together, I'll wear a mask. You bet I will wear a mask. So, again, we're excited about that. And then lastly is our culminating event of the year for our seniors, which will be graduation. We are planning to have graduation ceremony at OHS football field outside this spring.
Oh, hey.
We're planning for uh Sunday, June sixth, I believe it is. We are going to plan an alternate weather day. And so, I believe what the plan is at this point is that we would plan if Sunday weather doesn't permit us to have a ceremony, we would do it Monday evening, the seventh, as sort of a weather-related uh change. Um, Mr. Cath had spoken to seniors. The seniors felt like being together was an important part of the ceremony that they've missed so dearly. Um, we're lucky because it still allows us to have four tickets for every graduate. We're gonna separate, so we'll have about fifteen hundred people taking it in, about seven fifty on one side and seven fifty on the other side. The students are not considered part of that mix because they're participants and they're distanced away from the spectators. It's gonna be a great event. Sun- or Sunday, June sixth is going to be beautiful and sunny. And we're gonna have an awesome graduation event and I can't wait to be part of that.
Do you, is that gonna be like it used to be on the football field and the chairs sinking?
It will be on, it will be on the football field and we are gonna do our best to make sure that we aerate the field the best we can. But those are two things I've been asked by community members and I'm proud to say that it feels like a return to normal for us. Um, I wanted to make one comment when the middle school was here as well. We're going to return to better. Because we're gonna do things differently. We've learned some things along the way and we're gonna do things better than we've ever done them before and I'm proud of that, so. And then lastly, just as one other COVID update, we started spring activities today. And uh, spring activities, I'm gonna give a public shout-out to Mr. Octor Kirk, our activities director, who endured a winter like no other winter before, trying to keep things uh moving forward and 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 uh, I, you know, the thing is, and then I look at it and here we go, we get uh state participants in wrestling. We have a state basketball team going to the state tournament basketball. We have a gymnastics team that placed third at the state meet this past year. Of course, and then I mentioned wrestling before. What a great winter for us considering all of the things that have been kind of circulating around winter activities. And I give our families a lot of credit for really stepping forward and keeping our kids safe in that as well. So, uh, two other items, uh strategic planning update for all of you. We started that work about two weeks ago. We have about fifty people involved and our first activity was called a story wall, where we collected four decades of history of Oatana Public Schools. And it really looked at what went well during those four decades and what things maybe haven't gone so well. Because it's an effort really to look at our strategic plan the way we have it right now. But it's looking at what is the desired daily experience of our students and how do we use history to help teach us about what what our students and community really need. So, again, all of this culminates with some work you'll be doing this summer as a school board to examine the data and to really kind of fine-tune our strategic roadmap moving forward. And then certainly you'll help me to operationalize what it is that you're expecting as a as a board with strate- strategy moving forward. And how do we make that come to life as a as an operation strategy? Uh, two other things, standardized testing. I think there was a question about MCAs. So, um, much to my chagrin, we are going to be doing standardized testing. And what feels a little fun funky for me is bringing our students back and then telling them, thanks for coming back to school, now we're gonna test you. While I understand that standardized testing has a very good place and for good measure, we want to measure the system and how we're doing. And that's exactly what our intent is. The test scores will never, ever define our students for staff, ever. But they will look at our system and how we might be able to improve that. But I will tell you, the data is going to look far different than what you've ever seen before. And this will be one of those asterisk years when you look at the data because it's just, it will not represent all of the learning that's taken place. The other thing with that is there are federal waivers that the Department of Education is currently pursuing. So, we'll be giving the tests, but the uh, right now, it appears that the accountability measurement will not be there. So, there'll be no accountability measures. It will be a test for us simply as more of an internal audit, if you will. I believe there are different ways we could achieve that. But um, the new Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, has said we wanna continue forward with the standardized testing and the uh testing, the and uh ESSA testing that's been out there. So, lastly, 'cause there's a lot going on right now, the legislature is currently on their break, legislative break. Um, we have been hopeful in passing before this break, some sort of funding source for us to continue and enhance our summer opportunities for students that helps us address the time loss that we've had with students. I will not say learning loss because our students are, have been still learning. But the time we've lost could be, could help us in the in the summer in particular with some different enrichment opportunities for our students. The House on a sixty-nine to sixty-three vote passed some funding that would come to us, House File Ten sixty-four, which provided about a hundred and four million dollars for funding for the state of Minnesota for public schools to access. The Senate did not take up that same package. It fear, I fear it unlikely now that the Senate will take this up when they first come back. My biggest hesitation is that we may find out about summer programming on May fifteenth, which is about three months too late. Because trying to organize that and get students to come in and the transportation, we needed it to happen now. So, I'm fearful about what that might look like. But when given lemons, we are going to make lemonade. And so, we will find ways to do it. I can tell you that our community ed staff, as well as Michelle Prell and her staff, have been working diligently uh to already plan and pre-plan what summer programming could look like. The last thing, is Michelle out there? Is she anywhere to be seen? Is she around the building? I'd like her to come in here if she's outside of our doors. And there she is, right on cue. Members of the board, it is my honor and privilege to announce to you uh, the Minnesota Association of School Administrators Central Office Administrator of the Year, your very own Michelle Prell. Michelle has been widely recog- I'm not gonna stop talking about you yet, Michelle. Michelle has been widely recognized in our state as a leader. And as you can see, some of the things she's done in our district, and she's gonna report one other really cool thing about for our district tonight to you. But uh, we're very glad and proud to have Michelle working in this community. Should be proud of her and the work that she has done to really streamline a teaching and learning department and to really strive for innovate innovation around how we create new and enhanced opportunities for students. And then throw in a global pandemic into that and then watch Michelle go. So, with that introduction, Michelle, congratulations and and feel free to make any comment. And then please tell the board what we're excited for them to learn.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. You know, my dad always said surround yourself with great people and great things will happen. And I feel that way here in the Oatana Public Schools. So, I'm so thankful for the great team that I work with and, you know, the work that we've been able to do together. Cause nothing is just a one-person deal. It's a team effort. So, I'm thankful for all the work that our cabinet does, um, our district leadership team, the teaching and learning department, and of course, all of our, all of our teachers and staff members. So, there's a lot to be proud of. It's great to work in a district like this. So, thank you all very much. Um, uh, our exciting news, um, last Thursday, we were approved to be a Minnesota, Minnesota Department of Education online school provider. So, we are very, very excited about that. Um, it, cause it could be a very, very lengthy process. And I am, I'm really happy to report that we just made one, we had one revision oper- we made one revision and were able to then um meet the needs and the requirements that MDE had for us. And so, we now can offer um a comprehensive education program, K twelve, for students, not only in the Oatana Public Schools, but any student within the state of Minnesota. And so, we are, we are gearing up and there's a lot of work to be done now as we start to develop. You know, we have, we have a framework for a program. And so, just fleshing that out, what does that look like for us? Um, and then to be able to communicate that. So, we've started, we've started to develop a website. Um, we've started to develop registration guides um for our middle school and registration guides for our high school. What are the course offerings um that we'll have? What does it look like? When we look at our elementary program, um, there'll be, it will look, um, there will be lots of connections with um our Oatana Public Schools teachers as far as like in a morning meeting, learning blocks, a morning and an afternoon learning block. Students will get things like FIDE music and art um in the elementary model. Um, when they, when they get to fourth and fifth grade, then they have opportunities, just like our own students that are here in our schools for orchestra and band. Um, and so, that will, that plan um kind of will look a lot like distance learning because we've had a lot of success with our K-five distance learning plan. Um, and then really making sure that our families know and understand that there needs to be support at home. And so, we're calling that the learning coach model and um ensuring that families have a learning coach at home that can support the work being done. And we're, we're actually developing some trainings for for families. On what does that look like? What does learning, how do you help your child learn? And then our six, eight um students will have, it it will be more um, more self-paced and independent, but still very much, you know, ma- managed by a classroom teacher, uh core content area teacher for their core classes. Then when they get to the high school, it will become a much more self-paced model, flexible. Um, we recognize that, you know, as as students get older, they're more capable of, you know, working independently and in a flexible learning model. So, that's really um the way that the high school model will look. So, we're, like I said, we're working on a lot of different communication. Um, we, you know, we will be, I think this is a great opportunity for families that maybe have chosen homeschooling um within our community, within our state. Um, because, you know, as a, as a, if they enroll with us, um, they have the the luxury of still continuing to be home, you know, with their, with their, their student is home with their family. But we provide the device for them free of charge. We provide the curriculum and the resources free of part charge, along with all the supports necessary for them to continue to stay on target. The other thing, a homeschool family, um, so homeschool family is required to um ca- get curriculum. They're required to make sure that their child has a standardized test. So, we would be providing the standardized test, the curriculum, the device, and then the support necessary for them. So, I am hopeful that this would be a great opportunity for some of those families that would just appreciate a little bit of support. Um, and we're, we're here and ready to serve um those families as well as anyone else um in our school district or in our area that would like an online opportunity.
I don't know.
Yeah, please.
This is very exciting.
It is.
Very exciting. And I know this is all probably premature, but um again, as sort of spokespeople, right, and members of the community. So, the questions I'm, I can just hear already. Where do I sign up? Who do I contact? You know, what's the deadline? I mean, do you have any of those basic things that we can share with our circles?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, what we have, we just have pushed out the elementary in-district model. So, we're gonna, in-district registration forms. Um, and then we'll be, we're almost ready with the six, twelve registration forms. So, there'll be like two different processes. If you're a student that's already within our district, we have a really simple, easy online form that you would fill out, just indicating your child's name, grade, contact information, and then we will go back and follow up with them. They're already registered within our school, so it's super easy. If you're out of district, um, we've, we're working right now on that process. And so, they would be open and rolled into our district. There's a form that needs to be filled out. So, we'll have all that together. So, my hope is that our website can be launched. It's a, it's a big undertaking. Um, I I wanna say a week, but I don't know if it's physically possible. But, you know, our goal is within the next week or s- week, week or two to have all of this up and running for people to do that. If they have questions, they can call the district office. They can ask for me. I'm happy to answer any questions that they might have. Um, you know, but we're excited about this. And um, we know that we're gonna have a high-quality program ready for students moving forward. And and that we can guarantee because, you know, we're the Oatana Public Schools and we don't do anything different. So, that's important for them to know.
And they can find it through the the basic website. Would that be fair?
They, yes, they will be able to find it. We will, so that one thing to note, I'm glad you asked. One thing to note is this is, will be a separate school. So, this will be a separate school within our district. So, it'll be, and we'll have to come up with a name. You know, we're certainly toiling with a few different options. But um, the DCAC has been talking about that and I know our next meeting will for sure.
Okay.
So.
It'll be like one of the buildings.
It will be, yeah. It will just be like a a completely different building. Yep, only online school. So, yes. It will be, yep. It will just be like a a completely different building. Yep, only online school, so yes. But we will have everything attached to our website, so it just will be part of our, when it comes, when you come to schools,
Yep.
the online school will be part of that website as soon as it's built.
Um, so, again, I'm glad you addressed it'd be a different name, so then the enrollment report then would show it as is online.
Yep.
Um, so, I'm sure for what, curricular activities? Remind me, are they able to participate then?
Yes, yep, they are, they, yep. So students that are participating in the comprehensive program, which is the full-time online program, have the app, they're Oatana Public School students, so they have the opportunity to participate in our extracurricular activities. We're also starting to explore even some club kind of activities, chess club, or like what are some online kinds of clubs that we could even offer some of our students, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school? But yes, they can, if they want to play basketball, they can try out for the basketball team and so on.
I would add one other thing to that. We're exploring the shared time opportunity for students that might be from outside of our district, where they could, and we have to look at percentages, and Michelle and I just visited a bit about this, where it's where if you're less than fifty percent in our district, you're still considered. So if I'm a student from Medford and I reside in that district, I could still partake in all of the Medford activities, but I might take a course or two from Oatana High School or Oatana Middle School because there's something that interests me and I wanna do with part of my, you know, personalize my learning to have some online. So we're exploring that possibility. Obviously, we have to come up with some agreements with the local districts that we would be serving. Or there's the option that Michelle alluded to, which is a full-time open enrollees. So I live in Foston, Minnesota, and I wanna take classes at Oatana Middle School. I can do that. I just have to open enroll now to Oatana Public Schools to be part of our online academy, so.
And so Jeff alluded to, so a comprehensive program is a full-time program, so we're we're a six, twelve comprehensive full-time program offering. And then in addition, we applied to be a supplemental program, six, twelve as well. So supplemental means that, and it probably is gonna work best, maybe not six, twelve, but more nine, twelve, but because students could, like I can see a middle school student that is almost all online for us, but they come and they wanna be part of choir or orchestra or band, they can do that as part of the supplemental program, so. And then the other, the other option is a little bit like Jeff had said, so maybe I'm a high school student, and I'm gonna attend Medford Public Schools, you know, for two classes, and I wanna take two online classes with Oatana Public Schools. And so there's, uh, there's an agreement that we look at, a shared time agreement, but it's considered part of the supplementary options that we have because we applied for both of those programs, so we have some flexibility for students and families.
Do you foresee any movement from, um, the ALC students to potentially this?
Um, certainly, they could be, yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, I think some of our, some of our students, um, might be juggling full-time jobs or a family or things like that, um, and online might be a better option for them. Because, I mean, some of the programming might be run through teachers across our district, and ALC teachers will be part of that as well. So yes, ALC students could, might choose this as their option because it's, it's a much more versatile, flexible option for them.
I know this is fully funded, so if a student elects, they would be considered a full-time student?
Full ADM, yep. Yep.
Yep.
Even if they're supplemental?
Uh, supplemental is, it's in a shared time agreement as you split the ADM basically with shared time, so.
Yep.
No, I just, you know, it's a great opportunity, and Michelle and her team have worked really hard to put this together. Just, you know, so many districts, when they do this, some are on their, like, their tenth revision of their plan. And Michelle had one revision. We made it, and it was granted almost immediately for us, which is fantastic, because I think this really sets us ahead of a lot of other school districts. We certainly will be learning from some that have gone before us. But in southern Minnesota, it kind of puts us in a, a class right now where we're able to kind of maneuver some things, and we're gonna learn a lot. There are gonna be mistakes we're gonna make with this, and we're gonna have to keep on kind of, so there'll be a reiteration of this kind of annually about how we adjust and plan. Um, right now, we're doing, we're going through the registration process. I often say that it's the reverse Field of Dreams sort of mentality. Um, they have to come, and then you build it. So when it comes to staffing within this, we're looking at this about how many students might wanna partake, because then that's gonna dictate how many staff we would assign to it. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to capture here is the market share of homeschool students that maybe have already left us, that would wanna come back to us, because now we're offering a new and unique offering, which would help us financially also to make sure that we have the appropriate staffing for that, so.
And we do have families that are in, students that are enrolled and are in online, provide some of the current online providers. Our hope is that maybe they would come back to Oatana Public Schools versus going to Minnesota Virtual Academy or Sky Blue or wherever else they might be going, so.
I'm, I'm slightly confused. Are you talking also right now about the administrator report?
Yeah, we, this is part of the administrative report. Yep.
I just noticed that the twenty-first century learners about the the library, media, and eBooks, that that is a fantastic change for students.
Yes, and in.
Able to have a way to go in and not have to go vendor by vendor to find what they're looking for.
Yeah, we've really worked hard at, at the media department as part of the teaching and learning department, and yes, we've worked hard to create online options for students, and that will also be part of, um, this online option we have for students.
Yeah, I apologize for not adding this to our, this was kind of hot off the press.
It is, like, yeah.
And we wanted to make sure that the board was aware, because Michelle had shared this, then you had passed before, that we were moving forward with the application, and now this is sort of completing that loop. So I apologize it wasn't in the the report, but wanted to make sure we shared that tonight.
Administrative reports, yep.
Michelle, congratulations.
Thank you. Yes. Good opportunity.
Uh, we, as we move on, item nine tonight would be the consent agenda. The quick reminder here, we are approving the minutes from February twenty-second to twenty-fifth, March eighth, the dispersment, as well as the personnel reports. Eric, as you go around the horn, Tim will not be voting, as he does have a family member that would be a part of that personnel report. And, uh, so with that, does anybody have any questions with regard to the information presented in your pack? Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
All right, Mark?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Jelaine?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
And I myself, so I, six, so pass with Tim Abstana.
Motion carries. Thank you. Did you have something?
No.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna move into the, uh, board action, uh, items here in item ten. The first would be the school board policy revision. This is five sixteen is regarding the student medication. We've all had an opportunity to read this and understand it. Does anybody have any questions relative to this, as we do have members of the policy committee here that could certainly answer them if necessary? Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion. Uh, would one of you please introduce a motion for, um, school board policy revision, five sixteen?
I move that the board approve the revisions to policy five sixteen, as well as the addendum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Elstad. This has a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of probationary teachers. Mr. Elstad?
Thank you, and I've asked.